This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we will call to order the Monterey slide board at 6:00 PM on October 3rd. We have all three members present here in town hall. So the first order of business, we're going to move things around a little bit because thank you, John Tirico and Brian Dowd for joining us. I am looking it up only because these things are usually official because you do very official business. And what I'm seeing in, oh, that's, I need to see your town that accepts provisions of this section.
Provisions two.
Is it two? What's yours? Two or three? Okay, well, we'll do two. And then what we did recently, we did the wrong thing. We corrected it, but we'll still know.
We tried to do the right thing.
We tried to do the right thing. I just know that like the building office and the electrical inspector, they're all very official positions. Because we've turned to many of our physicians who do indefinite appointments or we do one-year appointments. But for this, in this case, we will, I would move to appoint Brian Dowd for a period of two years as the, as a local building inspector would alternate.
Be appropriate.
No, the correct term is local.
Okay, local building inspector.
Second.
Is there any other, is there any discussion on that?
Thanks for serving and.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you. And I don't know what your experience is, but I know you have someone who's in good shape to train you if you need it.
She's certified. She works in for the towns of Lee and Lennox currently, full-time. And as always, it's a lot of continuing education.
Sounds like you already got some experience.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for taking it up.
So we will vote on that motion and.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking it out of order.
Our pleasure to be helpful. Say hi to Chris.
The next order of business is the loan renewal option. So thank you, David Eisenthal and Sarah Hunter for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Would you like me to kind of speak to where I think we are?
Yes, please, if you want to start with that.
Okay, so the town has approximately $1.2 million worth of notes that mature on November 2nd. And these are for three purposes. You've got the remainder of the library project plus two equipment loans in that note issue. I think the major options that you have are you could renew the notes for a year. Or you could do permanent state house loan notes. I'll tell you, my recommendation is to renew the notes for a year. No matter what you're going to do in this environment, the rate is going to be higher than what you've seen. You're probably looking at something over 5% even either way you go. But I think that, and there's, I think, the chance that in a year, I can't guarantee this, but in a year, a permanent financing may do better than it would do now. So, and I know that Sarah has, you know, there are some details about exactly how much the paydowns need to be. We'll need to establish that, but the thought is that Sarah would take bids on this the week of the, it would be the week of the 16th of October. And that if you're meeting the week of the 23rd, that would be when you would sign documents for the renewal. So that's really in a nutshell where I see this. I think a one-year renewal or maybe something less than one year. But I think certainly into fiscal year 2025, that would be called for in this case.
Thank you. Just to review what money we're paying down when the notes mature, excuse me for my terminology if it's incorrect. But I have that we approved at the annual town meeting, 44,000 for one highway truck, 56,815 for the tandem axle, 135,000 for the library loan. And then additionally, the library received $100,000 of lead money, which I believe the plan was to put towards a principal paydown.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can just summarize what I think you just said. We're looking at a paydown on the library of totaling 235,000, of 135,000 of which it was appropriated. And 100,000 coming from the lead grant, 44,000 for one of the pieces of equipment and $56,000 for the other. Is that a correct summary of what the paydowns look like for this November?
That's my understanding, yes. 56,815, I think you knew that, just to clarify.
56,815, I will read that. Okay.
Sarah, we also, an extra 26,000, right, or 23,000?
Yeah, yes, 22,073.79 is an additional paydown for unused.
Wait, 73.79, that's too many digits. Okay. What was it for? It was the money, so we had appropriated that one, you know, we didn't end up using and we encumbered it to.
Okay.
I thought it was a long one.
What I can do is I can work with Sarah to produce a kind of a pro forma that members of the board can review it. I understand you're going to be meeting next Tuesday. We can produce a pro forma that you can then agree to, and that would allow Sarah to go out to bid on the notes. And then you'd have the paper, as I said, you'd have the paperwork the week of October 23rd.
Thank you. That all makes, that all makes sense to me. If you're supporting the one-year notes, I know we went through last year many different, we ran many different options. And one thing that I liked about the one-year, this year when we had fewer items that to pay off our debt, we appropriated a little bit more money than we were required to, to try to smooth out that.
Right.
So I'm in.
I think it's a good one.
And just going forward, there's no, I'll call it prepayment penalty. Should the town have additional funds to pay down the principal? That's always an option, correct? Not in a one-year, but in a longer notes.
Well, longer, generally, we don't see, we would have to make special provision for a prepayment, to allow prepayment for a longer-term issue. The good thing about the one-year notes is that you do have the flexibility at each maturity to make additional paydowns, which the town has made ample use of.
Right. So, special provision, that's interesting. I wouldn't have expected it to require.
I'm sorry.
Provision. I wouldn't have expected it to require a special provision.
Right, but for, you know, for these kinds of, you know, for the kinds of permanent notes that you would be issuing, generally, these are issued without option of prepayment before maturity. We could put a, an option in there, but the notes would be less marketable in that case. This is a little different, probably, maybe from the commercial sector where prepayments are more common. But these types of permanent notes, you generally don't see them for a five-year repayment. So, but I think doing the one-year also, I mean, doing the one-year means that a year from now, you would be able to make even more paydowns. You'd have that flexibility.
Thank you.
Are there any remaining questions or we're all done? Okay. Yeah, thank you for joining us this evening and we'll look forward to hearing from you in the next week or two.
Thanks for your time.
Very good. Thank you.
And just email if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.
Okay. So we do have the special town meeting warrant, but I think we will go ahead to who is here. Sophia. Or can you hear us?
I can't be heard.
Thank you.
You can't see here you though, because your mute's on there, darling.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I was just distracted by something.
Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening. So it's my understanding that basically we, you're going to be working with Monterey for the rest of October. So part of what would be good to do would be to figure out what we can tackle in the rest of October and how we can have a transition out.
Right, so a lot of this I've discussed with Melissa already. But I can go over some topics we definitely kind of made as the most important to focus on. And then if anything else comes up, I should be able to fit it in as well. Do you like me to go over what we reviewed so far?
Yes.
Okay, so definitely circling back to the handbook and the comments that were given from each of you. I'm not sure if I have everyone's comments yet, but I'm going to look back and make sure I do and then tackle that. As well as review, performance reviews. So when we administered performance reviews this past January, there were some just basic amendments that came up as well as some things that people didn't like about the formatting and some things that were confusing. So I'm going through the performance reviews to kind of make them better in all of those ways to leave with Melissa. Along with that, I'm hoping to talk to Marie and be in town for the rest of the Tuesdays to come in October. I don't foresee it being an issue, but I have mentioned it to her so far. And I'll also be announcing or sending out a mass email to everyone to just kind of let them know if there's anything that they've kind of been sitting on and wanted to ask me about, that now would definitely be the time. And then also kind of deciding what the department meetings are going to turn into moving forward and helping maybe organize some topics moving forward or how they might kind of evolve.
The only thing is, Sophia, I think, thank you for working with us to make for a smooth transition. I don't, I, you know, I don't want to send you doing too much work that then, I mean, I'm, I personally am hoping that, you know, we'll find either a firm or an individual to serve our HR function going forward. I don't want to send you doing too much work that might get, might be a moot point by the time, by the time you're gone, if that makes any sense. Like if you, if you draft up an evaluation, but then our next, the next person or firm serving our HR function, you know, may have their own date on what the evaluation should look like.
Realistically, timing-wise, I would like to see us set for this year because just because of the way we've set the whole process up, we're trying to do it at the close of the year so we can evaluate things for raises that will be ready in time for the next budgetary cycle. And realistically, if she's starting to land about co-review, actually foresee us having another person or firm in place in time for reviews in November, December. I mean, it's just about here. I'm just trying to be practical. I mean, not that I wouldn't want to see that, I just don't know how practical a plan that is.
Yeah, I guess I was off by a few months. I thought that we were on track for reviews in January, February.
To be done by, was it the end of February, right, Sophia? The forms that she did were to be the ones that I perform with, the goals that I supervise, and then the department heads with theirs. I think the urgent one is getting Laurie's and mine done before Sophia leaves.
Okay.
I mean, the forms that Sophia and I have been looking at today, I mean, I think they're just slight variations on what we were using. And I kind of agree with you, Susan, if we have someone who come in, you know, if they're dramatically different, having all the department heads learn something too.
I'm just worried about the cycle for this year being disrupted too badly.
I just don't know, how much can we do with 24 hours of work time?
It depends on how many good changes are, I would say.
Yeah, that's why my.
And whether we would end up just using the forms as is or a tweak of them for this cycle. Because it took us months to come up with those.
Yeah.
Like.
My, my, my thought is though, like with 24 hours essentially left, maybe it makes sense to wrap up ongoing projects like the boards and commissions handbook and the employee handbook. And, and then hopefully, will we have someone on November 1st? Probably not. But hopefully we have someone soon and later, or some firm serving in the function. And, you know, they're going to have, everyone has their own preference of how they do things. And I just wouldn't want, I just feel like maybe the month is best spent wrapping up those two projects, but.
If it starts to take on a life of its own, then I will let you all know. But I will do as much as I can with the time I have.
I think the employee handbook is right up front. We got to get that finished. It goes with the job descriptions and so forth. So I think, I would think that between, you know, wrapping up the TA's job description, employee handbook, the board policies, guidelines, that's going to pretty well fill her time up. There was, you know, the other question we need to ask, how do we go finding help? Do we want to look for a consultant? You know, a consultant would be more readily available, I would think, than an employee. And, you know, is it going to be realistic? As I talked to Melissa yesterday, some of the other towns aren't interested in bringing someone else on. So that makes us pretty much by ourselves. So then, you know, where do we go from there?
Sophia, just, and I realize this is an evolving job and the needs have changed substantively over the course of the year, especially with some of these projects winding up. But if in this, you can give us an estimate of what you think, if we were going to look for a consultant, how many hours of consultant work per week, per month, do you think would be appropriate? Like what do we need to look for when we're out there based on your experience with the town? And you don't have to answer that right this second, but it would be good to have for you to think on that and maybe give us something that would perhaps help guide us when we go to that next step of looking for someone to fill your shoes.
Okay, I will say that a lot of my function is obviously overlapping with a lot of what Melissa already does. So it depends on what is manageable for her to keep too, so. But I'll think about it and I'll email you all.
Okay.
I do think a consultant would be the way to go. I think it's manageable. I think the position would be manageable if Great Barrington didn't require a full-time person. And if you were to organize with maybe a few of the smaller surrounding towns, it might be possible to do another intermunicipal agreement if people are willing.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I keep doing the performance reviews. We always did them in November in the library because then you'd have an idea where you were going budget-wise, as far as your staff is concerned. You know, doing them in February, you're already past the budget season or the end of it. And you have, you know, you start to think, well, you know, this person should have a raise or whatever else. It doesn't give you that option. And I can see using last year's and just tweaking it a little bit as needed.
I, I, Frank, I think I tend to agree with what your proposal is. Wrap up the handbook, the boards, any committees, and move to the last.
Well, we've got to push.
Finish the TA job.
The TA job, sure.
I think we're close on the manual, I mean, so.
Also, I think that the handbook for boards and committees is close enough that the last few tweaks, I don't even think it has to be on.
I just saw it on that today, so.
Yeah, but I suspect that whatever we come up with should be okay for Melissa to finish up, like.
Melissa, the most recent one I sent you, I think, you know, if you use that one, right, I would, because that.
Yeah, that's the one I sent the other day.
That one looks like it's pretty close to finish, yeah.
And I think the handbook is almost as well. I don't think, you know, Sophia and I met this morning and I don't think the list she gave you is unmanageable. I think we both realize that together we can get that stuff done. And Mickey actually brings up a good point. The evaluations probably should be done a little bit earlier because if you guys are going to require that the budget requests and capital requests are done by, I think you said, January 10.
Then we wouldn't want to be doing the evaluations in February and trying to knock around with everybody's budgets.
Yeah, I'm trying, I have, we have to go back to the, because we set a process last year, right, for them reviews? Just curious what that is.
I don't remember what the date was. I think I was operating on the date we came up with for finalizing the budget and back calculating. But I don't know that that's what we did last.
Yeah, I don't think the process was so much as that we had a date they needed to be done by.
Right.
So I don't think there's anything wrong with starting a little earlier because it's for the calendar year.
I just don't want that stuff to get pushed off the end and mess with the budget cycle.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have a, we have a transitionary period regardless, right? So to speak to that a little bit, I think we just have to solicit proposals and do interviews like we do. If we've, I'm, it seems like the way that things are, a consultant is more feasible for some amount of hours than trying to hire someone for such a few amount of hours. But I'm open to entertaining both.
I.
Maybe in the short term, we use a consultant and then, you know, we could break out and shop for, you know, advertise for someone that.
I mean, I think it'll be tricky to find, just solo, to find someone for X a number of hours outside of a consultant. Unless we're going to try to, I mean, it doesn't sound like anyone's interested, but.
I only had an informal conversation with Mari and she just, we talked about that we didn't feel together, we had enough hours to make it an attractive position for someone.
Sorry, do I understand correctly that Sophia is going to be full-time at JUB? So what about Sheffield?
Sheffield was through last year.
Okay, so that's why we got the X hours.
Two hours, right.
Okay, and what's that?
I also am curious, I just started looking at it, but the intermunicipal agreement. We need to figure out how exactly this is all legally happening, not legally, but. You know, the town signed on through 2025
Right.
To this, for a term running through June 30th, 2025. And there's a financial obligation and such. And I, I don't know exactly how this is all panning out. I don't know how Great Barrington can do what they did. But, I mean, it's, it's what we all signed. You can see Mark Perinsky's signature. I haven't really dealt into that realm.
I initiated this, actually. This wasn't initiated by the town of Great Barrington, just so you know.
Okay, I mean, that's good to know, but we still have, you know, regardless of who initiated, we have an agreement with five towns. And I'm curious as to what Sheffield did. There's a way to exit the agreement, but it's with notice and such and. Anyway.
I mean, I think that when the agreement falls apart, I don't know, is there any contingency in there for that?
I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, there may be that despite the agreement, there's not really recourse. I don't remember there being a contingency plan listed in there, but it's been a little while, so I can't say I remember it clearly. Was it in the file?
Yeah. Anyways, there's that, and we don't need to.
Believe it or not.
But you have that now. But I think it's worth looking at what exactly is happening. Because, like I said, there is a financial obligation with the town, the Monterey, always still Monterey Barrington.
Well, clearly, if we're not getting the service, we don't have the financial obligation because they, they're terminated.
Yeah.
The bigger question. And, and I mean, I don't think that our not liking that's going to stop that from happening, so. I don't know what, what we'd be looking for in recompense, but.
Yeah, it just, when we're talking about eight-town agreements, regional agreements, are people going to play nice? But I am.
It was really, the word people was in there, so.
Okay, so Sophia, I will get you my employee handbook comments, end of this week, latest. And. And, yeah.
I sent, they have mine.
Yeah, they've had mine for.
So.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us.
Anything else you want to tell us?
I don't think so. I hope to see you all before I leave, so feel free to say hi at some point. But yeah, I'll miss you all as well.
Take care.
Take care.
Thank you for everything.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll start going to order.
So the warrant.
This document, how many more? So just to fill everyone in a little bit, because some stuff has slightly changed. So I initially felt like holding a meeting on Saturday made sense because that's when Monterey's been doing them. And I was aware of a request to hold it all on the same day on Monday, October 23rd, but I didn't know how serious other towns would think that. It turns out that of the eight towns, six of them have agreed to hold their meetings on the Monday, October 23rd. And I was at the last meeting of the regional school district planning ward. And I asked some questions and I think there was a convincing argument to hold all the meetings on the same day. That way, when you're going into your town meeting to vote, your vote actually matters. As soon as, right, as soon as one town votes no, if one town votes no, it's a moot point, all the towns.
So you kind of get a more honest assessment from each of the towns by doing that.
Yeah, if, if we go.
I'm just worried about attendance.
If we go on Saturday and we vote no, for instance, for, you know, then it doesn't, all the other towns go in their meeting on Monday, the 23rd, and they know that it's a moot point. And they may well still have the discussion because they may try to form a smaller district. But technically, the whole thing has failed as soon as a single town votes no. So it's, the argument is that it's not really fair. And usually, our job is every day to work for the residents of Monterey. And in this case, it might make the most sense to go earlier than anyone else to give Monterey the most leverage. But I think it's a little bit rude to the other towns. And what if someone did that to us? What if Alford went before us and voted no? And then, well, you know, all this buildup, years of research, and we don't even get to have an honest discussion on it because it's a moot, it's a moot point. That being said, Eggermont met this morning and voted to meet on Saturday, the 21st.
Did you see the Facebook posts that they had? They were really upset about being told.
Yeah, well, and that was my initial reaction. I didn't see Eggermont's post, but that was my initial reaction was, you know, the school budget's always voted on town by town. And I remember instances, not so much lately, where we already knew how this town had voted and people were curious, how is Monterey going to vote on this big school item? But usually, those were issues of majority or supermajority, and this is an issue of. But usually, those were issues of majority or supermajority, and this is an issue of unanimity. And it really, it regardless, I think regardless of how you feel on the issue, it really would limit the opportunity for people, or voters from all eight towns to consider, you know, from a fresh clean slate. That being said, no one can, because Eggermont's going first. But if Eggermont votes no on Saturday, that's one thing. If Eggermont votes yes, then the seven other towns are voting with relatively, um, little persuasion. Another of my concerns was what happens as people are getting texts and phone calls in the middle of the meeting? Alfred voted this way, Great Barrington voted this way, Sheffield voted this way. Well, you can't, maybe you can't, because I reached out to Lucy and Jake and John Silver. Is Jake, so it actually goes back, there's more than I actually have even let on. So I told them at the meeting that Monterey was considering Saturday, the twenty first. And actually, everyone on both sides of the issue, for and against the merger, at least how they had voted in the meeting, cause I think the vote was sixteen to five. People both in favor and against the merger spoke in favor of holding meetings all at the same time.
That's interesting.
And they, you know, said it was only fair to, for the residents of all the towns. After the meeting, Jake emailed me and CCed John Silver, I assume because he's representative, but also because one of the things I told him was that our CART person might not be available. And I guess the CART person was initially contacted Lisa and John. So they got involved, and Jake reached out to me and John. And I had said at the meeting of the Regional School District Planning Board, which I hope neither of you attended, because I expressed opinion about it. I said that, uh, I said that I was convinced, you know, more of holding on Monday. And I think mostly because if we're just looking out for Monterey, you hold on Saturday, you have more leverage. But it's not really fair to the, to the towns, the six towns who are agreeing to vote on Monday. And everyone's kind of, I agree with Eggermont. No one can really tell us when to hold our town meeting. They don't have that authority. But it's, and like I said, people who are answering my questions, I asked a number of questions, um, at the meeting, like I said, both in favor and against the actual school district merger, spoke in favor of holding meetings at the same time.
Which is kind of interesting and telling, I think. Like that, that even the people opposed to it.
If Eggermont votes no on Saturday, then do you think the turnout on Monday is gonna be lower, because it's?
I don't know, because they might want to sell it as your vote could decide whether we include you in talks of a seven town. But I think, I'm not fully certain. I know that it makes this vote moot. But I think what actually might have to happen is you have to create a new Regional School District Planning Board. But I don't know for sure. Don't quote me on that.
Oh, another three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Don't quote me on that. Either way, I know it, either way, I know it's gonna take a significant amount of work if people are up for it to remake a new proposal, because of how much work this one took. And yes, a lot of the work's done, but you're gonna have to tell each town that their, Eggermont is small, but it's not Alfred's small, and it's not even Monterey's small. So their, everyone else's assessment would have to go up.
But if they do vote in favor of it, then sort of it's still in everybody's court.
Yes.
Um. What do we think we'll get for, like, let's assume they vote yes, so everything's still on the table. What kind of turnout do we expect to have on a Monday? That's worrying from the start, Monday versus Saturday. And I, I don't have enough experience. I don't think they've ever been held on a weekday while they're Thursday.
Laurie Shaw.
Can I just speak from ancient history? Thirty-five years ago, we had five simultaneous town meetings here within our district to appropriate money to build the Mount Everett High School.
Okay.
They all happened exactly. They started at seven o'clock. It was packed. Now, granted, this was a long time ago, but it was held at the firehouse and it was standing room only. Everyone was so invested in this issue, and it was the middle of the week, and they provided childcare down at the kindergarten. So it, it was really very well organized, and so I think there's a lot of, uh, feelings about this issue. And, and I would anticipate that even on a Monday night, you would get a similar turnout.
That actually makes me feel a lot better than you, or I mean, it, it, whatever happens, happens, but the fact that people did turnout makes me feel better about what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've had people come up, a lot of people ask when it's gonna be, and I've had people say that they couldn't make the Saturday or they couldn't make the Monday. Maybe Saturday would be higher attendance, but people do things on the weekends too.
Yep, this is.
They go, they travel.
Right.
So I thi- you know, I was on the fence and even leaning towards Saturday, but I went to the meeting and it just felt like it would be rude to, to go against what other people are doing.
Do we think we can, can we manage it? Have you said anything?
The school district, uh, arranged it.
The school district?
The school district arranged it. It was, it was unbelievably organized. The, the teachers hired kids and it was, it was just amazing.
It's brilliant. I mean, I don't, that, that building is unsafe to use now, so we'd have to figure out where we can do it. I mean, maybe the community center, but I don't know how many kids we'd even be talking about, pardon me.
It's, yeah.
Because it, it would only be little kids, right? Older kids can take care of themselves.
It's quite a key, it could be a few hours, is the only thing.
Right, exactly. We don't know.
We have a library.
We could explore.
I thought about that too, but again, I don't know how many kids it is.
Well, I know, I mean, that library or the big room will hold like eighty people. You're not gonna have that many kids, so it can, it could hold it in. Library is open seven to nine, so, you know, some, I mean, but you'd have to have people be able to take care of the children, but.
Uh, Melissa, maybe you can fill us in, but I was looking back at town meeting warrants for some reason. And I think it was as recently as twenty nineteen, it sat on the town meeting warrant, that childcare was offered.
Yeah, we used to, our Berkshire South used to provide it for us, and then it just, I wonder why it stopped.
But it was pretty recent, twenty nineteen, I think.
It was back in the Brazilian and bringing games and stuff.
Basically.
It's not a day, but not at night, but at night.
But we did used to do special that night, right?
We did, but I don't remember ever setting a childcare as special.
So.
Keep in mind.
My vote is Monday.
I'll toss my hat in with Monday also.
I think it's probably Monday.
I would love, it would be great if we could, because having both parents of a kid that's actually in the school system would be great. What usually happens if you don't have a childcare is that you only get one.
Monday, the twenty third at six o'clock.
The question would be how to, how to do it? Where can we get, I mean, even if we can.
You can reach out to yourself, but we're not supposed to pay for them.
Yeah, oh, that, so speaking of pain.
Speaking of pain.
So, yeah, we'll look into childcare. I, and it'd be, I think it'd be good to do, because a lot of young, a lot of families are as, gonna be as much affected by this as one of anyone. So the school district agreement, or the reg-, what's called the eight town regional agreement, is forty-four pages, eight half by eleven, which is twenty-two pages double spaced. But I think if it's affordable, we should mail it with the warrant.
Oh my god. So she hasn't answered me yet, but I can tell you right now, based on the thick one that we had that last time, they're gonna end up having to put it in envelopes, so there's gonna be more of a cost.
Oh, cause this one they just fold up and they just write your thing on it.
And it's gonna be a big envelope, right?
Part of, so part of the reason I'm in favor of it is, and maybe this is just something solved by Enon, Lucy and Jake, and especially if it's gonna be thousands and thousands of dollars, we're not gonna do it. But when you, so in here, it references the eight town regional agreement.
Yeah.
And it says, it says it can be found on the website, ettowns.org.
Right.
Okay, it can be found on the website, ettowns.org, but it's not particularly easy.
It's not easy. I printed it out.
Yeah.
I, I tell you, you have to sit down and read it, because they're making so many decisions, so they're intermediate, and then, then you lack specials. I was permanently over to the town, there's a lot to it.
Well, it's, there's two different parts. One is, it's a long and difficult agreement, agreement. The other is, if you go to the, if it can be found at, is it actually a link that takes you directly to that document?
No, and I wanted to copy.
And I forgot how I got it.
That's what I'm saying, is that's what should be in there, so, or it is not.
I tried to put it in, Susan, but it's very wrong.
It's very, can we have it posted on our website and you just link to our website and go right in? Right.
It's here.
And he has it too.
Let me show you. It's here, right where, where.
Well, I would.
I love those words.
It's actually, I, I thought it was on the front page and now I'm not seeing it.
Okay.
Uh, that's my problem.
Right, so here's what I'm proposing.
First of all, you could write Jake and say, send it to me, cause you're tired of looking for it.
Well, no, I found it earlier today.
Yeah, but.
I'm not tired of actually looking for it. I just don't think it's good form to send a warrant to everyone saying, we're voting on this forty-four page document. You can find it at ettowns.org, but then they have to do a scavenger hunt to find it.
Well, I think you do like what Susan said, you get it posted on our site.
I think we have to, we have to alter what's on there, so they please, you can find the link
So they can download it. And then you could always make copies available.
On the blank page of Monterey, right? So it's opening page on.
Yeah, make copies available.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but, but literally say that it's on our, our landing page at monterey dot mass, and we have it on there. You click on it and it takes you to that link, so all you have to do is be able to get that monterey ma dot.
Yeah.
That I'm okay with. Sending them to piddle around there and be frustrated, that gets a big thumbs down. But I, like, forty-four pages, given how many, like, I'm sorry, but I just know the majority of people are gonna toss that right in the recycle bin. It's so much wasted paper. I totally understand what you're driving at, but like, if we had, like, a few copies at the library and a few copies here and allow people to use the link, frankly, the majority of people with kids know how to access the internet, right?
Well, so.
So we know they're gonna be able to get it, and why?
And by the way, it wasn't this hard to find it earlier today, but now I can't. I, maybe I'm just looking in the wrong place, but earlier I found it with a couple clips, but it wasn't, it wasn't that easy. But now I'm actually having difficulty, and it's probably just cause.
You're trying to do our special.
Something so, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be like that.
No, it shouldn't.
It shouldn't be like that. If, if you're gonna vote on a document, it should be very memorable, so if the solution.
Can we also maybe send them a note saying, could you please, on the eight towns voting page, put up a button that takes anyone from any of the eight towns directly to that document? Do not make people hunt for it. I, I don't know if they're hoping people will hunt for it, but what the heck?
Well, I think that's prob- that's probably the good solution. I like the idea of mailing it, but, but, uh, that's just me being old fashioned.
I know, and I get it, and if it wasn't forty-four pages, maybe I'm like.
And sort of like with your Monterey meeting.
Yeah, it's just, it's so unwieldy and so much, I, I just, I'm just picturing a pile of paper and.
Okay, so we will not mail it, but we will have it, copies at town hall, we'll have copies at the library, we'll have copies. We could do them at the transfer station.
Yeah, so they even can write it, but it's on the front page.
What page is that on? Do we need to fix it in the front?
I would, I don't know if we should change it also, because they, you know, they sent this thing to us. Isn't this, I don't, the copy to which is available for inspection at town hall and on the website, ettowns.org. Page three, or it's a third paragraph, article four.
Okay.
I don't, maybe we should just leave that. I think Lucy and Jake are really pretty responsive. I'll just tell them, look, you need to fix this. And they'll fix it, and we'll also blast it on our front page, just like we, we'll, we'll put the warrant there.
Right.
Right, Melissa, we've been doing it in the past, to put the banner, we'll banner it. We don't need to put it, we don't need to change the warrant to say that, but we'll just banner it on our website with, which will link you to the warrant article and the eight town regional agreement. And then we'll tell Lucy and Jake to.
They need to put it like on the, on the landing page.
Yeah, in red. That was just my questions, whether we.
Yeah.
However, there are some attachments, um, which is just a tracked, changes version of the zoning bylaws, which there are a couple things in here that really are common sense, need to be changed, like there's wording that says, insert provided map of the properties that probably just should be removed, it's confusing. But this is what we got from the planning board, so we don't have any authority to change it. But we didn't make a motion on the town meeting floor.
Where are you tied about the insert?
Um, page two.
Okay. Number.
Um, section two point three, middle page. Insert provided map of the properties. And then I also don't know about the zoning map. What's the deal with that?
The one that's here?
Those are just successor maps for, to give people a sense, but it's not.
I'm worried that they insert provided map of the properties is they meant for one of these to be inserted.
Um, but we, we're not, we shouldn't, I mean, basically, I was, you know, back and forth with Rob Hooves and Tom Sawyer and Laura Menty. I only got that yesterday from them.
Yeah, I know, that, that's what I'm saying, like, I feel like this is like, wow, that was last minute ads on a website. Gotcha. Is this the current one or the only one that I have? Oh, what I'm doing, about, I'm sorry, the link, building page.
Learn that.
Right.
So that being said, so they gave it to us like that, actually, Rob Hooves was saying that he's hoping to make an amendment on the floor about town meetings, but I just, our hands are tied, we can't really, legally change it.
That's fine, no, it's there, it's not a issue, yep.
Um.
Except it, it doesn't say zoning map. It says provided map of the properties, which I'm guessing means this, not the town.
But what it really, it shouldn't even have that, because it, when you're reading the zoning bylaws, it should just say that MPSOD will be shown on the zoning map of Monterey, that's just, but we'll change it on the floor and then it'll be fine. Article four, we don't have any say over, they gave that to us.
Right.
Article two, we've seen before, minor wording changes, Donna inserted up to twenty years, which I think is good.
Okay. Yeah, that way you get the flexibility.
And other small things like that. And then the revolving funds.
Are what they're.
It just, you know, if one of the, the police funds, so they can purchase the nine one one signs and have people buy them for them. And the council on aging, it's, they've been getting, um, deals with your Shakespeare and Company, where they can sell reduced price tickets. And this will allow them to do it that way. Although they can't buy them directly from like Shakespeare and Company, but Catherine said they couldn't, but, okay.
Ettowns.org wrote my computer.
Rebooted, it's the solution for most things. I don't know, it's like, I cannot tell you how many weird failures tech has been hiring the last two weeks for us. Um, several, a bunch of apps, like, just refused to work until you either reboot the phone or we, we had a couple cases where you had to off the app and reboot it. And never, and all the time it hasn't, anything has just been a problem, but suddenly it's happening all the time. And, and exactly, we just went through some of those types.
So did Mark tell you if he was available, cause he didn't answer any of my requests for the Monday?
Well, he typically works at the library seven to nine on Mondays, so Mickey, you're here. Given the importance of this town meeting, we have to take the moderator.
Do you think we can find coverage for him?
From the staff. Pardon? From the staff will do either, either both Mary and Holly will.
Okay.
Then thank you for reminding me of that, and I will bring that right up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would, uh, motion approve the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Drafted. Okay, is there any further discussion on that before we vote, we vote? Susan?
Yes.
And Frank?
Yes.
And Justin, yes. So that's unanimous approval of the warrant. Um, just to follow up on town meeting. Melissa, can you please look into childcare possibilities? I don't really know how we can fund a mini slide board expenses. We're not mailing the thing, but I will reach out to Lucy and Jake to make it more prominent on their website. And Melissa, please do the banner for the warrant. It will probably be two different documents, but a banner that leads you to the warrant and the eight town regional agreement, all at once, I guess. I bet they can make it better. I just have to tell them it's.
They know, they just didn't think of changing it.
So at the last meeting that I was at, they were talking about mailing it out to everyone, but they didn't have the money.
Yeah.
And other than that, we just need to do our, our usual.
Pre-shoulder.
Uh, town meeting show up.
Okay.
And, and whatnot, so, did anyone else have any questions related to town meeting?
Well, thank you for reminding me of that, of United Live Word.
Were you here for a specific business?
We're, we're offering the opportunity to move that business up if you.
I didn't even, because I thought you were here for the school agreement.
No, we, we were here for the, uh, recognition of Mary May Cook as she leaves her job, um, as the director of the community center. So we were hoping to have some sort of official proclamation from the board, just acknowledging that she is leaving, that she did a great job as our first director of the community center.
And we all received the board's letter or email that highlights her contributions in the last few years. So I, I would make a motion that we do recognize Mary's contribution to the Monterey Community Center at the next select board meeting. And in the beginning of agenda, have her come in and recognize her performance.
Do we wanna, do we wanna see if we can make like a little certificate of appreciation or something?
Something. Yeah.
Okay.
You know, but.
And I think the, uh, the committee, uh, the Monterey Community Center committee would be willing to, uh, help draft such a proclamation or letter of appreciation. If, if that's necessary.
Well, I, I have the sense that perhaps you have something you'd like to have in there, so. I, I may be wrong, but I, I would be honored to have your input and, um, I'm willing to take on doing something up and, and I'm happy to work with you guys in any capacity you would like. If you have some wording you want to give me, awesome, I'll take it and I'll put it together and we'll come up with something nice, like just one page, frame it if you want.
Sure.
Or maybe we should.
And thank you, uh, and the board for considering this, you know, this, uh.
Thanks for suggesting it, actually.
Okay, so there's, Susan will take point on that, thank you, Susan. Oh, so back to the town, town administrator.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for coming in.
And thanks for looking for the new director and we're looking forward to hearing you about the interview.
Yeah, so am I.
Hope the interview guys will know something.
Thanks.
Thank you.
She, she sent it out, I, I made a few corrections or adjustments on things I saw, but they were so good of patience.
Yeah. I had a, I had a few comments.
I didn't know if I wanted to make copies of these, I got what I got, we just go to, if you get your computer back though.
The, the funny thing is I've had this since twenty sixteen and I've never really had major problems with it.
I'm telling you, there's, I, I wasn't kidding when I said that there had been like ridiculous tech problems. I, I just don't, I don't know what accounts for it, maybe there's like. Retreat and record, record, record or something, but seriously, bad one, hopefully it's not contagious.
I don't get the sense that it is. Nice swap seats.
No, I stopped carrying mine around because it did some weird stuff, so I tried to keep it in my place.
So what version is this?
That was the Sophie.
That's the one that Sophia sent.
She took all of that.
Okay.
If someone wants to send me their changes, I will incorporate them and print them out.
I did last minute, unfortunately.
I think I have yours, but Frank did not send them to me, so.
Do you, do you have mine?
I have.
I don't know if I sent it to you or not.
Actually, no, I don't have any of yours, you, all of them.
I can, I can make copies of what I have.
Well, if everybody has changes, they should all send them to me so I can incorporate them all on my.
So we can have one document that has all this up.
Talk that aside.
Well, I did, I, I did last minute, but I, I don't, yes, but I don't, but, but I don't know if it's worth.
Got today? I know.
I mean, I think it's worth talking through something that we.
Yeah, I do, I do, I'm just, I'm just getting ready to come, yeah, this whole. It's not, I mean, I have them up on my computer, that's, that's.
Oh, we have warrants, or the warrant, the bill.
Oh, okay.
Seven, five.
Did you find it?
Yeah, Justin's.
All right, here comes mine. It's around here, there won't be there, right?
Yeah. It's so.
Yours and mine.
Egremont confirmed that I did it for Saturday, Mary said that. The school staff said there was not adequate parking for Egremont and Sheffield at the school. And the other two members refused to meet at Catamount because of complaints about access and lighting, which she's never heard.
Um, and they, one question I had was, did they sign the warrant or did they vote and say, we're gonna see?
Well, I asked her if they weren't holding the meeting on the twenty-third, she said never twenty-first, it's ten AM, so.
Well, just because I have conflicting reports from two different people, one person emailed me and said, can you reach out to the chair of the select board in Egremont and try to persuade them, otherwise. And because it can still be changed, and then someone else told me that they thought, that they thought they signed the warrant, which can't really be changed. I don't get the sense it was because of logistics.
No, it wasn't.
Um, well, I mean, he just had his point of view, which I also, you know, previously held, but it wasn't, you can't really hide behind, you know, the availability of.
It said Egremont's general bylaws give the board a select and authority to establish a warrant and convene special town meeting, attempted intervention of RSDPP officials or members of neighboring town select boards is neither appropriate nor appreciated.
Well, I mean.
And I'm just, I was just.
It, everyone, everyone, everyone knows.
He sent it down.
Ev- everyone knows that we could have called it for what we want, we chose to go along, so.
I don't feel like we have to defend our thing.
I don't think we do, I mean, the amount of work that's been done, I'll see you do.
Yeah, when I, I just dug up this, uh, intermunicipal agreement, because I, my first assumption was that, oh, it was probably for a year and it's probably. Out of date and we never renewed it, so it's not irrelevant.
The contract for the.
For the human resources, sure, services, and, you know, look, it is what it is, we're in the situation we're in, but I'm a little bit curious to go through this and see. Is this all above board? I mean, I just, I, it's not nice to.
Yeah.
Have someone turn back and.
Yeah.
Something, which, the town. The town, I mean towns that we're gonna potentially be in a school district with.
Right. They get some black marks already, right? Although, I know, no one's ever backed out of one of the school districts, at least that one.
Not out here, but you know what, but I have wonder about not being in a school district too, because towns do it. And you can do it.
I wonder what it turns out to do financially, like how, does it end up costing Otis?
Yeah, well, and the thing with Otis and Farmington, and the Farmington River, Otis and Sanesfield, right, is they do have some, they have their elementary school.
Right, well, what if we catch K through twelve, but it's weird because we'd actually have, Southern Virtual would have K through twelve, not K through eight, right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But one of the things I think comes into play, and I just don't know enough about this stuff, but the required minimum local contribution, so I don't think the state ever lets you like get away with not funding education. You'll always have a, have to fund education.
Couldn't do it in Colorado.
Okay, well, it, that's fine.
Changes yours.
Yes. Um, so. Just going in, in order.
Okay, so just making sure, yeah, going in order, but I just wanna see the, the first page, I don't see any changes, so is it looking like we're okay with like.
I got some changes with my, my, yeah.
You did.
Okay.
So that's why you couldn't send it.
Okay, supervisor responsibility, employees accountable on a townwide basis for the success, I put other than that.
Wait, the, the employee.
The town, the employee is accountable on a townwide basis for the success of programs.
Okay.
And then you go down to where, uh, line up where recommendations for the select SB. And I moved for the, it should say, to me, it should say, recommendations to the select board in collaboration with the HR director. For the hiring, training, disciplining, instead of having.
Yep.
The hiring before.
So in collaboration to get on before.
For that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, while we're at it, the select board there should just be SB.
It, I think it does say SB.
It does say.
Done a lot.
Oh, the second one, employee supervisor, it should have the SB, yeah, it should be consistent, either SB or select board all the time. Okay.
Um, well, Frank, you just jump in if you.
Well, I, I see under the changes there, I had the same thing, under the TA, supervision of the TA. Um, I put for B instead of.
Does that add, the under the supervision of TA, is that added or?
It's added, because you can see it's faint, it's a different.
Yeah, I know, but I wasn't sure that the fade was.
You better have good glasses.
It's an addition, this is on the line, right, yeah.
Straight through.
All right, so the next is D, it finally reads promote above average interpersonal skills, I have demonstrated consistently above average interpersonal skills. And then at the bottom of the last line of that where it adds organization period, I have emphasized thorough and timely follow-up. Right here.
Um, this is still in B?
This is still in B.
Okay.
You know, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna break this, I'll just say it from here.
Right, we'll, we'll get your, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But it's good to go through.
Yeah, and I'm sure.
Cause I'd like, I mean, everybody's like to get this across the finish line. C, okay, what I have is in the last line, use proper discretion when omitting information to avoid the perception of not being transparent versus perception of being non-transparent.
That works, it's just a little less, uh, got better process.
All right, on E, there's no changes, I have a change where it says, okay, stay up to date on rapidly evolving federal state insurance regulations and regular educated oneself on various subjects. This is where it's changed, subjects including but not limited to law, bylaws and regulations to provide bomb home. So that my additions, subjects including but not limited to.
Right, makes it work.
Okay. All right, that's all I got through that, down through I.
Um, I think that's my comment on the top, oversee the use and maintenance of town owned property under the jurisdiction of SB.
Which, where are you, you lost me.
Top page.
Top page what, oh, the next page.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, it's just like the organizational chart, um, like the town administrator, if, you know, whatever is going on at the town beach. Um, you know, the parks commission.
Yeah, I put your, I entered your stuff back in there, she took, you're talking about on B here.
You know. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
I saw, I read through yours.
My only problem with the way that I had it, that was definitely a draft way to have it, because it's not comprehensive.
Right.
Oversee the use and.
I put in, I had.
It's a town property under the jurisdiction of the SB in part for the director of operations.
But Frank added in parks managed by the parks commission, library managed by the library board of trustees.
Yes, and I don't think you should put that in there, so, so we took it out, Sophia and I, because it was, I didn't think you would have a heart attack if library was mentioned in there. And I don't think you should limit it, I don't think you, this, this describes what we own and what would fall on, I mean, I would never be able to say something about the library property.
We, you can't, it's not under.
It's not under jurisdiction or yours.
But that's why I put under the jurisdiction of SB.
Right, well, you wrote it as well.
But, but Frank's wording doesn't work.
Okay, then that's fine.
Frank's wording is my old word.
Well, Sophia and I.
Well, you're giving your newest version. I don't.
Being five.
It's my, my old wording, my new wording, but yes, the way that I had it there was a draft, a comment.
So we'll go with Justin's.
No, my new one.
Yeah, I know, good, you, the new, the Justin's new and approved.
The current, it's not creative in, as you're.
The new and approved, the new and approved.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing.
Item H was deleted because repetitive.
Right, because C now ha- has handled transfer station permits, but it was, it was appeared again in H.
Right, and, right.
That's all.
Okay, so we delete H.
Right, because it's already in C.
And then on D, I had capital town meeting warrant.
Uh, also, it should say warrants plural, but you already fixed that.
So I did it too, Frank. I think that was my comment from last. No, for paragraphs of annual and special town meeting capital, you know, warrants. And then I separated annual town report to a different sentence because I did, because I think they're two separate things.
The warrant said the reports are different, yes, and we don't have a capital warrant, so.
No, the capital letter.
It's a town meeting warrants capitalized.
Capitalize, I thought you were saying like.
It was town meeting, town meeting, and the T and the M were capitalized, it was a warrant. And then we put a plural.
Capital T, right. But plural of warrants, yeah, it's in there.
Is warrants.
You did, you did pluralize.
That's a capital. No, but it's a capital, yes.
My bad. Town meeting warrant, I don't think is capitalized.
I know, I know town meeting is capitalized.
But warrant, I don't think is, because it's a thing, no.
Do you know?
Town meeting is a body of people.
I'm not really sure annual town report, I'm not sure report needed to be capitalized either, but I don't think it hurts anything.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt, we, we can't get, we can't get.
Yeah, I don't wanna worry about the capitals.
Um, did you have anything before G?
Uh, I, F, I just took out coordinating alarm permits and maintain related database.
Okay, why? I'm not, for me, more general, but, just want the thoughts.
Well, we have the thing. Because I put it up under C.
Oh, right, yeah, you did, that, out it goes.
Yeah, so I put it, because that's all the different permits.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay.
Perfect, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, um, yeah, so G was mine, it should either be served as IT coordination and liaison, but it makes more sense liaison is a different word form. So I think it should be as the IT coordinator and liaison, because coordination and liaison are. Because creation and liaison aren't.
Right.
Match.
Right. It's match.
Stupid editorial thing. What?
I thought I had it organized in a different way.
I'm gonna do that, put page numbers on.
Okay, nevermind, okay, so each is deleted because redundant.
Right. And then that's all I have up through K, and then we go.
That's all we have up through K.
Okay. And the finance, only on A, I put meticulously craft both operating and capital improvement budget. I just added.
I really like those adjectives.
I know.
Where did you have that?
Under, where, under A, it says, I wanna get the first line, in finance committee can meticulously craft both operating and capital improvement budget.
Instead of to craft, it says meticulously.
Um, so B is a good question, Susan. Non-internet town spending revenue throughout the fiscal year works with the finance departments to run reports as requested.
So we don't have a finance department, that I know, certainly not plural of them.
Alright.
So are we talking finance committee, are we talking department heads, what, what is it meant to be?
I would say finance committee.
Okay.
That's my opinion, the only.
I was just sure redrafted or what it was supposed to mean, so.
Well, here's how I, I changed, I didn't cash the department's thing, works with the finance will put in their committee to create and or from reports as requested.
Right, so we, we took that out, um, because I think the creation needs to be approved by the select board once they determine how long something like that is going to take. And if it's worth, um, spending the time and or money, if it's a VEDAR report that needs to be created. So I, we took it out to not have a person be locked into saying you have to do it because it says it there, when it may not be financially.
Proven.
I have like three words running around my head.
Proven.
Yeah, I mean, we need to remember that the town administrator reports to the select board, because one of the things is. And we've had over the years, finance committees that are involved more or less, but you can't. Um, the finance committee definitely needs to be involved. Um, but the problem. Is having, I mean, this, the finance committee has their own jurisdiction and it's carved out and it's separate. Um, I mean, it's interrelated, but it's not, there's no authority over, you know, supervise, supervisor over the town administrator.
Those are in lecture board, they should throw them on the other side.
Their advisor.
Um, but. Are, are you lost, where are you?
Um, but in the past, some finance committees have been somewhat overburdening and. And so they, there's even been periods where the finance committee was fighting rather badly among themselves and. Different parties were requesting all kinds of different things, or I should really say more demanding, it was problematic for the town.
A problem, yeah, I, I didn't know the history, so I don't know.
Well, I, but, and I don't think it means we need to leave it out, because I think it's certainly something that could play in the role, but it, the wording should be crafted. So that there's no doubt that the select board.
Yeah, right, I, I understand, right.
Is in charge.
Okay, so works with the finance committee to run reports.
As requested and approved by the.
As written and approved by the.
Requested and approved by the select board?
Yeah. Does that work?
Maybe.
And that should be committee. So when we have, whenever, I don't wanna get off topic, but we just approved, uh, pol- financial policy, and the finance committee just approved it as well, right?
Capital policy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, cause sometimes we do joint meetings, but I was assuming that.
Yeah, I believe that when we, when we finally did, that like we had gotten the thumbs up from them, they had meant that we were right for the day.
Um. So you're wondering if we should delete C?
Well, I, it does, it doesn't, I mean, I wanted to hear what you guys thought, but to me, it doesn't seem substantially different from A.
Um, I think the difference is it's. Some things aren't in the budget, but they're still, they're not in the annual budget process.
But this says craft both operating and capital improvement budget.
Yeah, but I mean, so.
And then spent monitoring, spending and revenue is in B, so what's left? Is when the long-term capital improvement budget have to include strategic planning?
Well. Um, yeah, but we have other financial policies and. Other financial things that come up than just the budget process.
So, okay, so you're seeing that as being more about general financial policies?
Well, I think what might make sense is, well, actually, I think it just makes sense to leave it in there.
Okay.
Um, or combine it with, but it's two distinct things, right, like when we, I, I know we just met, I just mentioned it, but the financial, what was called the capital planning policy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is not the annual budget process, that's its own thing, that's, that's what I'm getting at, I guess.
Okay, that's fair. Alright, so that you saw the emphasis there as being on the financial policies and practices and developing, rather than the, the actual. Capital budget. It's the, how you do the capital budget, right?
Yeah, and then, I mean, there's practices throughout the year, like this revolving fund, it's not a good.
So, yeah, okay, that's fair.
What we've been doing is not a good financial practice for the town. And so we're establishing.
Even though we just, wait, it is or is that, is good or bad to have a report?
What we're doing is good, what we, we're doing it before, okay, so Melissa.
Okay, very, okay, thank you. Great, has moved us towards better system, thank you, okay.
Yeah, exactly. Um.
Okay, I, now I see your, your point, and I would agree with you, I'm just looking at the wording to see if. Cause that wasn't my takeaway when I originally read it, and I'm trying to figure out if there's a way, because it's pretty well worded, so. I don't know.
I would word it the same as A, with the TA collaborates with the town accountant and treasurer, because I mean, they're really the ones that. Drive the financial goals and.
All of the, the policies, I guess so, like, did the stuff about the revolving funds came from them?
Uh, no, that was just something I had to know, but I did consult with the accountant on it, I'm sure that I was advising the correct.
So would you like to change working closely to collaborates with?
I would write it that the TA collaborates with the town accountant and treasurer in formulating strategic financial objective goals, so.
I, I kinda like that.
It works for me.
Yeah. Maybe so.
Um. Um, next B or D, I didn't make comment, but. The invoices in VEDAR, is it all invoices?
No, it's only for certain departments.
So should we, I mean, I think we should note.
I wouldn't, cause like, what happens if, so the reason that I do it for certain departments is, there's certain departments who are making a lot of mistakes and. The accountant is refusing to enter them, so it got transferred to me, and at some point, if it's someone else in there that is more. Techno- technically savvy, it may go back to them and I won't enter for them, but right now, this is to keep the rules turning and those getting paid.
Well, I think what it could say is something like for, and I, this may be in here somewhere else, and I. Forget if it is, but it should say something like for the town administrator, obviously for town administrator, select board invoices. And other departments as.
As needed.
As needed.
Or what if it says?
Cause to me, I read it.
Right, go ahead.
To me, I read it, and I didn't know if that meant every single invoice or. I, I think it should note that.
Okay, so if, if some departments are doing their own VEDAR entry?
No, so some departments have to, they fill out a form, they upload it to the accountant and she enters them. What was happening is the cover sheet, they put in the wrong vendor number, there, just a, there was a lot of mistakes on it, so they would have to keep sending it back, and then it would come back with more errors. So now it's coming to me and I'm fixing the errors.
Okay, so are they all coming to you or only some of them?
Uh, the library says their own, community center does their own, police do their own, clerk does his own, but did not used to. So before, the previous clerk did not do them right, and I was entering them, but Chris is doing them, um, tax collector does her own.
So I don't think it seems appropriate to list the current.
No, I agree, I agree with that.
No. Or that even that she is doing, because those might change according to these offices in it, so I'm trying to figure out a way to word it, what if we say, uh. Ensures appropriate, uh, invoice input into VEDAR accounting system?
Well, I, I think it, I think it needs to specifically say for, so like essentially the wording, something like select board, town administrator stop. Like when we pay for the warrant to be printed, that's gonna go through the town administrator, there's no question about that. Um, to get input to be, for the vendor to be paid. There's an additional, there's an additional responsibility here of doing it for other departments as needed. And I just feel like that should be noted, and it could just say, you know, input, official inputs, I can't speak. Directly into VEDAR accounting system for, you know, the select board and the town administrator.
And other departments as needed.
And other departments as needed.
Alright.
And always try to get them to be able to do it themselves.
Yes.
Yes, wouldn't that be the answer? Should be the goal.
Um, did you have other things?
Going back under committee and boards, the, under B, um, providing well-documented clauses and adhered to town. Bylaws, common Massachusetts, MGL, and an N employee manual.
I'm just, so, so adding employment.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta back up and.
Yeah, no, I agree. No, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear, since I'm doing it by your auditory and rather than a written version.
Other roles?
So I think the, my additions are.
I don't have.
So I did, I, I put, since this, the current TA is serving these, act as zoning board secretary, act as board of health secretary. And, um, I'm also putting out there the possibility of acting as assistant town clerk, which we, I know happens in a bunch of other towns, and I have no. Particularly strong feeling either way, except that it would mean that people could hand documents in even if the clerk wasn't here.
Specifically for the ZVA, because it would really come in handy for the ZVA.
So ZVA.
Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, right now, um, they can only turn in an application and start the clock if the clerk is here, and I think that he's only ten hours a week.
Yeah.
Right, so some people come to drop them off, and now I'm kind of, my hands are tied, I used to be able to accept them until it was pointed out that it had to be the town clerk. But if you make me the assistant town clerk, then I can officially accept them and start the clock.
Does Marie do it most often?
Yes.
Yeah, does anyone else do it?
For those, for those towns, they either have an assistant or the.
A big town's happening, to have somebody, the clerk lost all the time, it's full-time, so it's not relevant. Do you, I mean, I don't see a downside to doing it, is anybody?
I don't see downside.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't like it.
I, I, it serves the resident seat better, you know, if you only have X amount of hours with Chris and they come in here and, you know, that can be.
I mean, but it, it gets to a point of, and make the town administrator, the building commissioner, and that's why, and one person, I mean.
Do the inspections too.
I understand you're serving the residents, um, and maximizing availability. But there's certain things, I mean. Where you don't, you have different people for different reasons and different offices, it's not, we're not a centralized government, we have a building office and a conservation commission. And part, I think part of the reason that's nice is you go to build your house and you don't have, you know, if one person. If the building commissioner decided on everything, you know, that could be a tough road, if for some reason it wasn't going well. But we have a separate elected one inspector and a separate, um, conservation commission, and it's a little bit decentralized, and I think that's a nice.
What, uh, other than accepting paperwork, what we should be doing as a town?
Chris and I talked about it, we, we said we wouldn't do anything else, you know, because the dog licenses don't, aren't time-sensitive, this stuff. Maybe on the off chance a desert area, I mean, like if he was out of the country or something, um, but we both agree that at this point. You know, should you add it to there, it would specifically be for ZVA, because, I mean, that's what, we, we've had in the last two months, two people that have come in. Pretty upset with the process of either not meeting when Chris is here, and so it would, it would.
Do you have to be titled assistant town clerk to be able to receive paperwork? You can be, could you be town clerk secretary or something? I'm just like, cause that might answer your problem, I'm, I'm just trying to get it so people can hand in their paperwork. And don't have to come just during those hours, because if you're talking about a lawyer or an architect or somebody like that who's trying to drop off paperwork. It could be a real impediment, depending on when they're coming or how far they're coming. And if that's the only thing that it typically is, I'd just like to see us find a way to allow it to happen. Like, it hasn't been a problem for me, but I would hate, like, I don't like that it's a problem for anybody.
Can't you just say that? That, that the TA is authorized to accept time-sensitive materials?
No. Town laws.
That's what we used to have.
MGL, right, MGL says that it has to be the town clerk.
You have to be.
Has to be in the town clerk's office that accepts it.
I missed that, I never, you did say that.
I mean. Cause that's how we used to do it, until one lawyer got upset. A different issue.
I mean, I think it, it would almost, to take it to the extreme. It doesn't make sense, but then we can make everyone in town hall a town clerk. And then, you know, you would come in the evening and hand the assessor's secretary. Your ZVA stuff, because she's also town clerk, I, I think, I understand availability, but I think there's a lot of roles of a town clerk. And there's a reason why there's a separate role, I mean, for years and years was a separate elected position. And I think this is playing a little bit too much, yeah, now it starts out as doing ZVA paperwork, but it's kind of, you're opening up a can of worms, in my opinion, of there's a reason why there's separate roles.
I, I see your point, I just think that if I was trying to get something handed in, and there were exactly ten hours a week in which I could hand it in, and my clock couldn't run until I did that. I would probably be annoyed, I mean, I would probably find a way to get it done.
By the time you go to the ZVA, how many people go to the ZVA here, a few? It's a big deal, I mean, you're paying lawyers thousands and thousands of dollars, right, and, and builders usually, it's a big building project. I think finding the time to turn in the paper is probably.
A small thing.
Uh, yeah, it's the least of the inconveniences, and I'm, is it builders who come in and they get frustrated, or lawyers?
Lawyer, builder, that's architects. I mean, if we think about it, so if Chris's hours this week are Monday and Tuesday, that person comes in on Wednesday, his hours again aren't until Monday or Tuesday next week, they gotta wait. Five more days or whatever to, to start their clock, and that's.
They've probably been designing for who knows how long in the building project, I mean, by the time they go, how long is it? See, how many, sometimes there's continued ZVA here, you've been on the ZVA, I haven't, but I look at the agendas and they, it doesn't seem like it's the kind of thing that needs to happen. Uh, urgently, it seems like that probably is the least of many real inconvenience that could be.
I guess so, but the, I, I could see the frustration because of all those lag times in there, ironically, I think you feel it more. Like, I, I think that you've been waiting, if you think about it, you're the owner, right, you've been waiting all this time for, um, for your builder or your architect or whatever. To finalize all the paperwork and you're trying to get the project done, and then you. And then you find out, oh, well, it's delayed another week because, um, because the, I missed the town clerk hours or the town clerk doesn't, you know, here it's Wednesday, but the town clerk doesn't have hours till next Monday. Oh, the town clerk was sick that, that day, isn't gonna be in, so I can't hand it in for yet, another week. I mean, uh, if I were on that, it would bug me.
Is Chris's hours pretty consistent? Is it every week, Monday and Tuesday or?
No, um, it's mainly one to six PM, um, but it depends on his wife's, his wife's in here and there, so it depends on her schedule he comes in.
So it's not consistent, you can't say this is the schedule of the town clerk because it varies week to week.
We put it on the website each month.
Right, right, I saw he has for the month, but he does, but I didn't remember if it was the same.
Does he ever do, like if you called him up and said, you know, I need to get this, want to get this paperwork done, would he?
I think he's offered to do that, yeah.
And that, that.
I think what, you know, what happens though is people come here expecting.
Yeah.
And. The, who, depending where they're driving from, you know.
The in-process delays that you're talking about where we have to lay table stuff and come back with. I don't think, that's a different process. This would never impact that. Because usually what happens at that point is they've had something before us and there were substantive issues that we wanted them to address. So they kind of have to, we're like, well, we can rule on it this way or you can fix it. And then, you know, then each time they're like, we'll just fix that. And we set another meeting. So it wouldn't involve the clerk in that?
No, I understand. It's just my sense that between, that from the time that people who go for special permits from the ZVA, when they decide they wanna put a little addition on their house to when they can live in it is a, a really long time.
Then a few weeks.
And that, a few, I mean, a few days is not worth changing the structure of our government for. But that's my sense. You know, if it was, um, I'm trying to think of an example, but if it was something, it's my sense that a few days turning in your, um, thing, which i- is not a lot in the grand scheme of going for a special.
Right, I hear you.
Which seems like a huge ordeal.
I mean, I know you feel passionately about it, so.
But I'm fine with the zoning board secretary and the board of health secretary. The only thing I'm a little confused about is, wasn't in here before?
It was, I had marked it, and I had marked it as a no, I forgot to put, you know, I didn't see it in.
As a no?
Uh, a no.
As a no.
Oh, yeah, I know. It was in there and then it, I noticed that it got taken out, so that's why.
I didn't go back to the original job description, I think it was in the original.
Yeah, I mean, it was in her.
It wasn't in the original one, it was an appended thing, a separate job.
I remember reading it somewhere.
Right, it was a separate job description that was kind of like attached to. And I, I'm like, if this is all one job, it should just be in there and not be like a bunch of appended jobs. Um, are we, that, is that, that's the end of other roles and starts recommended minimum qualifications?
Yeah. Um, I, I think that there doesn't need to be, I feel like a bachelor's degree in public administration is very narrow and specific. And there's probably a lot of people who are good town administrators who don't have any bachelor's degree in public administration.
I don't even know what the related fields would be, but.
But, yeah, but I, I think you, you can look at work experience. I, I, I mean, it's nice to have a bachelor, but it, you know, what, if they have fifteen years of somewhere where they've done it before, ten years, I, I, you know, I don't get hung up on the college degree.
So why don't we just delete the first sentence there and say, and it was candidate should possess, does that work?
Well, yeah, I'm a, the state of.
Is there any opposition to that?
No, because I, I was gonna say that I think asking for a master's degree might be a bit much given. Like, this, I don't think there's that many people out there with that qualification and saying it's highly preferred makes it sound like shit.
State of Pennsylvania, we did a lot of those. What college should master's degree over?
Well, I'll tell you, I'm not even sure having a master's degree would help you in this job anyway. I mean, maybe if it was in psychology, that's about the end of it.
I got two little changes and I'm done.
Okay.
Okay. The, I'm okay with recommenda- recommended qualifications, work environment, then skills and ability. We have strong oral and written commun- I put exceptional oral and written communication.
Wait, where are we in, skill and ability? Okay.
And then instead of having exceptional organizational ability, I put above average organizational ability to manage multiple projects in task, I added in task.
What is in task mean?
And, A and D.
Oh, and tasks, okay.
And then down there we have expert, it should be ex- expertise at unit, unit, uniting diverse individuals.
So it, like the next two sentences down, yeah?
And then.
Maybe expertise in instead of at?
At.
No, e- expertise at.
Yeah, that's right.
Expertise in.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you're right, yeah. And then, um, instead of saying various stakeholders, I put all stakeholders.
Which sentence is this? Oh, okay.
Okay. And then, um, the last one, tactical handling of all public and staff concerns.
Um, one other one that I didn't note, what I'm looking at now, is just work envi- in, in the work environment section.
Yeah.
Availability on the town on a cell phone is expected at all times to address critical situations and emergencies.
There should be a period in that sentence.
Yeah, but, but I, I don't. I guess my sense is that, that shouldn't be a requirement of the town administrator, availability at all times. I mean, it sounds like you're the, you're the.
Fire chief.
It sounds, well, it sounds like you're the fire chief or like the, the head of the police. Yeah, like the chief of police or something.
Yeah.
But I don't know how to reword it to say like, you know, availability in general. Um, I just feel like that's excessive.
If you delete, if you delete is expected at all time and just availability on the town on a cell phone to address critical situations of emergency, it's a little less extreme. I, I, it's a question, it's just a thought. I mean, what would seem, do you ever thought of this one before? How to word that?
Maybe it could be, um, you know, availability on town on a cell phone is, is expected during normal business hours to address cr- critical situations and emergencies and occasionally, you know, uh, you know, outside of normal work. But it, it's.
At three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, well, it seems excessive to.
I can run the volume down a little bit.
Yeah. I have a sister-in-law that told me that time.
It just, it's excessive to say.
No, I, I see you. I, I see your point, but if you're just doing it during normal business hours, then it's just a problem. Right, like that's normal hours. If, if, it seems to me like the point of that sentence was that this had to be something that was outside normal business hours. That, that seems like the intent of the sentence. And it kind of seems like the intent of the problem, frankly. Um, if we're.
Well, no, it got, no, because like, um, you have a building commissioner, he has a phone so that people, right, can coordinate, or we could have a building commissioner with a phone to coordinate site visits, which a lot of builders are probably gonna be much more better, much, much more better. At not grammar. Are, are gonna be much better at texting or calling, some things are just better over text or call than, than email. So they can coordinate a site visit, but it doesn't mean that the builder can say, the concrete's here, you need to be immediately available.
Right, okay.
So there's a difference between being reached on a cell phone because phone conversations and text work differently than email and saying, because you have that phone, now you have to be on the ready twenty-four seven.
Right.
It's like, okay, you get that in the same way you get an email and you respond within a day or two.
Right. No, I, I absolutely see your point, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how to do this.
The first sentence says that with occasional requirements for evening meetings and after-hours work as necessitated, why do you need to say that it has to be available on the town on a phone? What if the cell towers were out and you had to call me on the home phone, you know, I got my home phone and I do, you know? I, I think the first sentence covers that.
Covers what everything is.
That you are.
Yeah.
The person is.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to think about the town cell phone.
Alright, delete that sentence, yay, problem solved.
Um, I think we have general agreement on everything. Should we have a clean copy to approve next week?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Um, because we discussed it and deliberated on all of it, I will put it all together and then send it to you.
I just did it while you guys were talking.
Okay. The treasurer contract, so I didn't mean to open up a can of worms, but I'm curious how, how it thinks, what's going on?
Um, she's, I mean, I have with a price, but she, um.
For the second year, but we have to.
Second year, right, um, but she's coming up with a scope of services that she doesn't agree with taking the seven and a half hours out of there because there's, when they originally became our contractor, it was to provide certain services and there have been things that have been asked for outside of the normal work of a treasurer, which would not fall in the seven and a half hours. So she just wants to make sure that the board understands what the normal scope is and that anything outside of that, I believe is where her, how early it was.
What were the, so when we asked for that was outside of the normal scope?
May not be.
Okay.
So, but, but, but here's, here's my question. The seven and a half hours was just to say, I don't, you know, if we have a contract and you were finalizing a budget, it's not the time to say, well, we used up our monetary time. We have a contract, we're giving you the consistency and we need the, the work product. I mean, if we wanna do it for, I also really don't like the average, you know, the ap- kind of average seven hours. If she wants to guarantee us eight a week and we get eight a week and we know anything above that is that and she tracks her hours, that's one thing, but it seems really loose to say an average of seven hours in the contract and then be told, you know, don't have time for that. So, if she wants to a scope of services, I mean, I'm completely fine with saying this is in the scope and this is outside the scope. And these are the things that are being done for this contract and I, did we, I guess we have it laid out more explicitly in the accounting contract? Eric laid out.
Yeah, uh, can we just wait and see what she comes back with, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe I might be, maybe overreacting a little bit. Maybe she is as well, I mean, I think, I think she just wants to make sure that it's clear. Oh, so, I mean, I know this and maybe it's not, well, not to you guys, but over the last year there have been some things that have come up and have taken quite a bit of time, um, for her to resolve, you know, multiple emails from multiple people on some issues that have arisen and, um, they have put in over seven and a half hours. I think she just wants to make it clear that, you know, the normal work should be seven hours. She has never denied doing anything, I'll tell you that, but I think she's feeling it.
I think, so my sense is she's feeling as though she's fulfilled her contract and giving us more and she doesn't, she wants us to be aware that, um, that some of the requests may be on fine work for time than they were actually contracted for. And I think she just wants to clarify it so that that she doesn't feel like she's being taken advantage of, which, fair, but let's see what she puts out.
But, and I'll, you know, here's the thing though, is I was reflecting on recently how it's been good to have a town council that's paid hourly in certain ways because she is responsive.
Right.
The planning board got me their bylaw yesterday. I was actually on Tom over the weekend to get it. I don't even, even know if it would be on the warrant if I didn't kind of push the subject.
Right.
Like I think you guys approved something that you want to be on the town meeting warrant. So Monday, I call her up, I'm gonna have the warrant to you, this is like five PM. I sent it at five thirty, it was back to six thirty, the comments. And I don't think that, I was on with previous, two previous town councils who worked on a flat fee agreement. And that was not the experience, at all. And I just think there's something to having people that you are available and that do the job in a, in a timely manner. And I'm not saying we're not getting that from the treasurer, I'm just thinking about how do we guarantee that going forward. And yeah, the contract, it shouldn't be for, you know, anything that ever comes up under the sun. But yeah, if she wants to specify what she's gonna do, like Eric, cause isn't that what Eric didn't his, Eric Henshaw? He just specified what he was gonna do, um, as accountant, then we're paying you to perform that, uh, service.
And outside that would figure out, figure out already, right, and you know, just hopefully let us know that, yep, you realize that's early. But let's see what she produces because it may be, we may be worrying about it, yeah, and it's.
Well, I just feel bad because I didn't realize it would.
We didn't get it.
It would take many more weeks when it's been expired.
The test has a lot of issues, so, and it's a trial.
Well, it's on a will basis and she gets to check every month. Alright, what's a town server? Melissa or Frank, I don't know, you all vote for it, huh?
Uh, we met with Roger and, um, you know, Roger did the.
This is Roger McDonald?
Yeah, and we did a drawing, we just got familiar. And there's a question is, you know, there's, you can have a server here and then you can have that back up to the cloud, or you can just go to the cloud and have that server in between. So the question we need to answer is, do we wanna have a server? Now, I talked to Mari over the weekend and, you know, if we had a server here, she would put her account, her tax collector on that server. And she said that, I, you know, Melissa and I talked a little bit about it yesterday, that, um, if she goes to the cloud, they put a, you know, she, they, the software company houses it in the cloud, it's seventeen hundred dollars a year and she don't even have that budget. You know, Roger's feeling is, in his experiences, to have a server here and then back things up to the cloud, that way you can.
It's an extra layer of insurance.
Yeah, have an extra layer of insurance, but it also allows if some of you lose your internet connection or something, that would say you could still give tax information, you could still give other information and things like that. So, uh, we, the only price we have is for the servers, the one that was given to us earlier, right, Melissa? And it was about approximately, by installation, I think fourteen, fifteen thousand.
John Shannon.
Yeah. Um, you know, you have the server, then you gotta buy the Microsoft servers software. So it's not just a hardware. On a side note, uh, Melissa was gonna write the grant for a firewall and a switch here for this, uh, the main building here, cause that would probably come close to ten thousand and that's the most you could get for the grant. So, you know, we have to consider Mari's needs and we have to consider budget-wise, um, you know, Roger's a firm believer in having a server here and then backing up for the cloud. And security, it's not an element, people just hit, you know, how much do they wanna invest and things like that.
And it's not even a good investment, right? Because it's about five years of useful life.
You'd probably get a little more out of it now. I would have to ask Roger that question, I'd say five to seven years. You know, it depends where technology goes and what you, you know, things like that. It's, you know, that I suspect that, uh, that, uh, Mari's server, her needs on a server doesn't have to be super duper, you know, cause it's, you're not using a lot, multiple users and stuff like that. So, we could go ahead and I could write in a note to Mari and say, if we're gonna put this software on the server, what does the manufacturer recommend? And then we could talk to Roger some more and try to get into what that cost would be.
But he's proposing putting everything from town hall onto a physical server, right? Not just the tax collector's office?
Yeah, you can do, you can, you can, um, you can petition servers to like, you don't want it to run a lot of different softwares, but you could have, most of it would be storage, you know, emails, documents, stuff like that. And then you could have her software running it. We used to do, it's called petitioning, you're hard with, or hard done.
Partition.
Yeah.
Um, how many, so. I don't know how the tax collector's office works, but if the, if the internet is down, there is some software like. Word will, Word and Google will let you work on your machine, even if the internet is down.
Yeah, because it's loaded on your, yeah, it's on your desktop, you may not get to a document if you have it on in the cloud.
Well, often there's a backup copy on your drive too, it's not getting backed up to the cloud until that's accessible again. Um, I'm just trying to figure out if they're like, because it's a good point, we are. You don't want to be in a situation where critical records aren't accessible if the internet is down.
Well, I mean, the other thing you have to look at, you know, like we used to do it is how many times has it been down?
And for how long?
And for how long, you know, it does an impact, you know, I don't know what her schedule, she works, she's, I take it she's the only one that. Get getting access to that, so how many hours a week is she here, I mean, yeah, you know.
But I wasn't just thinking about her, right.
There's a, there's a risk and everything, but it's how much money do you want to spend?
And I I wasn't just thinking of her, I was thinking of like, if we're making this decision. Are there other critical pieces of data that would be problematic if there were no access to the internet and how, for how many people? Or how many offices?
I don't know the answer to that question, I was just thinking about that, I don't know what that means, that if you get a server. If the assessors would also decide not to move theirs to the cloud and if that would mean that we'd need a larger server. I don't care what you guys decide, but um, I can play devil's advocate and say, you know, you could say, what if we lose internet and can't get to this, but what if the oil tank? Leaks where the server is currently located and it kills the server? Or, you know, we also have, I mean, that where it's located right now is the worst place for a server to be, to be, um, so. It's definitely, I don't think, secure down there, um, if you're gonna, you know. I I, in my time here, I think we've lost the internet a couple of times and usually that's followed immediately by losing power, so you're not going to get to the accurate.
Anyway, right.
In which case.
In which generator?
Which, our generator only handles certain offices in this, in this building?
Like police.
The police, and I think it handles mine, I think it'll like, mine for like twenty minutes.
Um, it's, I think it's clear to me that the best practice is to have both. The physical server and the cloud, and I think the reasons why. I think we decided, you know, obviously years and years ago before my time on the board and even more recently, that we're not gonna go. Just the local server. Um, but the question is whether we're gonna have a local server at all and it really seems like it just has to be the. The best way to do things, it's just money, it's just how much money.
Well, there's, she brings up a good point, you know, that. You can, you know, I I believe in the proposal for the server, there was a rat, that you can get racks that are enclosed. And, you know, the temperature control, so, you know, in high humidity and stuff like that.
Ching, ching.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing about it is we're so dependent on it, you know, it's a reality that you need to. I I I will write a note to Roger and you, you know, give more of his opinion about it, so we can go out and ask a proposal. But we need to talk to Mari about what are the requirements for that software that she has? The vendor should give you a written, I need to have this, yeah.
Also, I just, I mean, we're really talking, as I understand it, it's the assessors and the tax collectors that are currently relying on that physical server. And both of them, the issue is making it through this fiscal cycle.
Well, Mari said she'd like to get it done by December.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Well, let's get what done?
But if we're gonna do a server or we're gonna put it on the cloud?
I see, but it, as I understood what you said earlier, though, she doesn't have an inner budget to store on the cloud this year.
She doesn't have the seventeen hundred, but that could be a reserve in the treasury, the assessors need to make it to next year.
This assessment is.
There's gonna be a much larger.
But my my point is, by the time we actually do all the research and make the decision and come up with the money to buy the server. I think it's gonna be the next fiscal year anyway, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just trying to be practical.
No, but I I think it actually makes a lot of sense, at this year's annual town meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about how much we're gonna spend on technology. And we kind of hit the middle, uh, not, not what we really.
Thought we needed.
Thought we needed, but a little bit of a higher budget because we were really low. And I think what we can do is come to town meeting next year and say we really want to get technology squared away. And we want, you know, these upgrades, including this server and the cloud, because that's really the right way to do things, it gives you the most redundancy. And it's gonna cost thirty thousand dollars, but.
Not just what you need it.
Well, it's the right way to do it.
It's needed, it's needed to to be productive in this world, unfortunately, you have to have.
That everything's.
And productive and reliable, yeah.
So in my, in my, my gut feeling is that we should be. Planning this out so that we can make a proposal to town meeting and you better have it in by January tenth.
One year.
Otherwise you'll be.
Nothing's not gonna be doing it first.
Um, but no, if we could have something together by January.
No, no, we can do that, I mean. These vendors probably get those requests all the time.
I'm sure they do, we just have to be clear about what we need, so.
Well, they, when they give you the need, then you share with the vendor, you know. The conditions, temperature wise downstairs, that aren't idealistic, so there's ways to get around some of that, so we protect the hardware.
But at this point, what we're looking for is a, is a physical server located in town hall, not only to run. Specific programs, but store everything in town hall, but then also back up everything in the cloud.
Yeah.
And I think both the.
Well, what I'm hoping we can, well, I think.
Allow that.
You know, I'm hoping we get the grant because if we got the grant, we had the switch and the firewall, that just raises our security up to. I won't say it's the best, because if they get through, they can get through their server, which doesn't have the security. But that would be nice if we could get that chunk, we can work on that. I'll probably email to Roger, he's been available and then we can sit down and talk and give it to Melissa.
Okay.
But why don't we plan on just doing it the right way and proposing it to town meeting and really doing it not the cheapest way, but the most redundancy?
And get everything up front, you know. So they don't send the chair to jail.
Plus, yeah, and I don't think it's like, the process makes sense and it's gonna look better going to town meeting. With the proposal of what we're gonna do, including the budget, especially if we're coming forward saying, and look, we got a grant to help us do it. Because the state thinks this is a really important thing, or the insurance company thinks, or whoever it is that's. It just gives, makes it a stronger case at town meeting.
Um, administrator, I need a few.
The Medex renewal came in for our retirees for this year, I'm sorry, for calendar year twenty four, it's four point oh seven percent increase. Guys accept, but I just need to vote on it and listen to the sound.
So I would move to approve the Medex renewal rate for.
Twenty twenty four.
Second.
It will vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval, sign on the dotted line. Um.
Thank you.
Do we need to? Make the decision about terrorism?
Yeah, so usually you guys say that we're not, we're gonna exclude the terrorism. And then I just need to do a separate coverage, this is.
This is a school, but like.
A school, not the Medex.
So it's. It's a hundred and eight dollars extra for the terrorism premium. From two thousand two hundred and thirty eight to two thousand three hundred and forty.
You're talking about the building that's.
The school building.
It was like, it was like, what was it, like forty five dollars a square foot or something if it was to get destroyed? It doesn't, and they won't hold it, they won't hold the disposal or material off, it'll be, it'll be a wasteland, but probably all lit.
Um, I was in there a month ago or so with the chief of police and the director of operations.
Right.
Someone who was interested in just what was going on in that. And the roof is relatively new, make a difference at all?
I don't.
I mean.
How many rodents did you have in there?
Not at the time.
But I know you're glad you're keeping the rodents dry.
I got pictures of.
There's evidence, there's evidence, but, you know, the roof. It it's, not the shingles, but the the roof structure is uh. Not that old. I'm sure it's somewhere in a boat.
Look at me, what's somewhere in a boat?
The roof structure, the schoolhouse.
Right, yeah.
It's something that we really should do something about one way or another.
The whole building? Yeah, I mean, I think we.
Is it structurally sound or is it falling apart right now?
Um, you can see the report from EDM ten years ago, which it was gonna be a deal back then to get it packed in shape, it was like, really cheap.
But ten years is a long time for a building, because I'm occupied especially.
It's not a good, pretty building.
But it's not good to let it sit there abandoned and.
No, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
So are we gonna do something about it or are we gonna sell?
I I'm all for selling it personally.
I think I would sell it.
Let's go right now.
I just think we have so many other things, other things.
Got a parked barber swan.
I'm just gonna head home now, see how we take it on.
I don't know, and I, like, it might be nobody wants it except the butters because there's no parking. And no way to make parking, but I I think it would be, you know, if we don't sell it, we have to decide what we're gonna do with it, we can't just leave it in that state, definitely. And I I realize it's an old building, but not every old building is.
I think it doesn't make it bad, yeah.
Well, no, but it's not just an old building, it's very historic and we've, out of the five schools in Mon- in Monterey. It's the only one that's owned by the town, I think. So, and you sell it, you don't know if it gets demolished and that's kind of a bummer, it's kind of like, yes, I understand, you don't usually have the money to just go fix up the school. But if you sell it, that's, I mean, you're making a decision forever that that building won't be owned by the town.
True, but if you do nothing for another ten years, we've made the decision and building is no more, right, like, the problem is it's languishing. And I, it doesn't seem likely to me that nobody has a viable, I haven't yet to hear a really viable plan for what. It's not going to be a school yet.
It's not gonna be a school.
No, it's not gonna be a school.
But so then.
Construction cost her.
Right, so then the question is, what what is a realistic use of a building that has no parking for the town?
Record storage.
Oh, okay, I agree with that one, Carson Justin always said that could be an idea.
It would be an expensive building to renovate to have record storage, you know how many containers you can buy?
Um, yeah, but you you, it's it's one, the village, there's not a lot, there's not a whole lot going on in this village. But the schoolhouse is one of the things that we have.
I I'm not, you know, I don't know, maybe you sell with someone that wants to invest in it, I I don't know, but it's, you know. But to just let it sit there.
No.
And we have so many other needs, you know, you know, the, maybe be a public. I I don't know, some kind of developer, I I don't know, there's no parking, it's, it's not an easy question, but. We don't have unlimited money.
It's hard for me to think about funneling all enough money in there to fix it and keep it up. We have as many other needs on the block as we do, but I understand that it's important to some people and from a historical perspective, it's just. I've yet to see a proposal of, like, storage seems like. Like, a historic building that we use to file documents is kind of, yes, let's spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix a building so we can store documents in it. I.
Can be made into livable property?
And the the parking problem is a big problem.
Well, I mean, an in, an individual person could park across the street and walk over, the problem is making it a public building, accessibility and parking.
Well.
Of actually hosting people in there, but.
And actually, I'm not even sure about the private one, I, they'd have to get a, they might even have to get a variance because I believe the parking's going to spot. But I could.
Yeah, I mean, I I wasn't actually speaking, I was just speaking logistically, right, people in the city.
Yeah, but but legally, I'm not really sure that it would even qualify for residential.
Where would you put a dumpster, just like on the.
Can you imagine all the construction vehicles parked in the middle of the road? Um, I don't know, eh, look, if you, if you feel strongly that there's a lot of people, let's see some proposals for. What we could do with it and what, like, some kind of ballpark of what that would cost, because absent that, the thing that makes the most sense is.
You know, it it says it's twenty two hundred square feet, I think they're only.
That much.
I was kind of surprised at the number, but it, you take a look at the square footage and.
That must be. You can't go floors and you can't go upstairs, right?
Time with, when we could do some back to the envelope.
Am I correct that the upstairs is not currently safe?
It's, I mean, it's not safe, um, but, but, um. Yeah, no, it's, you can't go into any of it, it becomes then lived in by.
Three thousand four hundred and forty nine, two thousand four hundred and forty nine square.
Forty four.
Forty four hundred.
Um. Yeah, it's 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 a tricky one because. It just, it's a tricky one, yeah.
Yes, that's what I say, it's like three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Um, well, in this market, maybe it is, I don't know.
A lot of interest rates are almost eight percent.
Well, given that the people that are buying these things are paying cash for them, frankly, the interest rate might not be relevant.
Yeah, but I don't know, those people, that kind of.
Yeah, you know, talking about the future of the building.
Okay, how do you solve that problem?
School building without terrorism costs two thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars, I would move to approve the insurance renewal.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? We'll vote.
Yeah.
And yes, unanimous approval of that.
Five pages for you to sign this, I'm gonna wait for the end if you want. Uh, next one is the letter to. One Berkshire, One Berkshire, I did make that correction, I to we.
Yeah, I would move to approve the letter of support for that, for the One Berkshire grant.
Uh, second.
Is there any other discussion?
So, may I just ask what what you're supporting with them? What's the whole, the whole deal?
Our brother.
She doesn't, she means way is One Berkshire and One Berkshire. Uh, for the this year twenty four Regional Economic Development Organization grant program. We do, they sign this every year, they, it's just, all they ask for all the towns to show support.
No, I can, I can understand, I just wanted to see where it was, um, because I was reading a very nice article about the B I C. Things they were doing with students for summer.
R D O G.
For sure, and they have.
It will be bad.
Right, that's part of them.
You're frank.
And I was just wondering if I could school went to them and and asked for advice. After that, I'll find out here. I mean, oh, may I make just one humble comment?
Sure, yes.
Could you just straighten that black and white map out, it's driving me absolutely insane, I'm nuts, I don't see things crooked, but that's just the.
Does that better?
That's much better, yes. Drives me crazy every week.
Um, is, am I producer?
Good night.
Or applicant?
Good night.
Okay.
Um, I'm also thinking, by the way, that we'll do. We don't even have the minutes that would wait, so we'll do minutes next week.
Okay.
I've, no, well, not just, but, yeah, um. Can we do everything next week?
So I I had a thing I wanted to add to the draft town report, I'll go ahead and send you those.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just another paragraph.
Yeah, we have been good about two hours, let's generally keep it that way and and so next week, do we have anyone coming in, we have.
So I sent you the David Bissell.
He's coming. Um.
What's David Bissell?
The, I sent you guys today that, um.
It's reminding what it is.
His property is the one, right?
Yeah, I see, what, the pictures of the truck, the three pushers, that, that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, right, right. I I really wanted to talk to Jim, but.
Oh, please, I'm.
I remember he is, oh, I think, I think he'll be back. Okay.
I sent him a text.
Yeah, he was, you know, we. Yeah, he was, you know, he got hurt.
Yeah, I saw it after you did it.
Did you, I showed you the picture?
I didn't see the picture of that, but I saw it.
A piece of a bridge on, 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 on.
And everything is good with, uh, we'll thank, hopefully, your daughters.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you got one, how many home mine?
Seven stitches. That, that, this is the rock that fell on him. It's about eighty pounds. He said they were underneath the bridge on Beretown Mountain Road, and he said it was looking pretty good, but then he saw like a crack and he went up just to see like if it would crumble a little bit, because when he did that, it just came flying down.
Geez.
Remind him not to put his finger in the dyke either.
Oh, wow.
I know, right? That was kind of scary. Hopefully, the bridge is still safe.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was-
Just anyone?
Definitely call Jim. I think he'll be back by then.
I have to.
And do we have anyone else actually?
Do we have any other major things that we know of that are on the agenda for?
We'll sign a thing from here.
No, no, just other major things.
Yeah, okay. Just, um, do we have any other meetings?
I have a grant paperwork for the recycling dividend program for you to sign.
Um-
Susan, that Berkshire Regional Transportation, you got off the line.
Oh, gosh.
They want to meet in every month for the next five months.
Why?
Because they, it's part of the board. Now they got thirty of the thirty two townships, you know, part of the board. They'll never get a quorum in there, have, get on their own.
But you know, is that the one where the quorum is a ratio?
Uh, he didn't mention that.
Um, I think it's the Berkshire Regional Transit Authority where not, you have to get a quorum, but Monterey is like one pointy, Greg Beresford is like twelve.
Yeah.
So it's Monterey, you can show up to help with the quorum, not by much.
Yeah.
I don't know. Certainly won't you do, want me to do a notification?
That's okay, I've got a multi-meeting for the open space meeting, coming up.
I called Susan, yeah, it's all right, I, I did a Zoom meeting and it was five minutes.
You were electing somebody, because you're in some capacity and knows that.
Yeah, and then they start sending you off, finding your tools and that.
Sorry, buddy.
That's all right, I didn't, again, we're not-
And Mary, Mary said it was signed, I'm just waiting for the council to sign it.
Okay, so there weren't, the, the air mouse warrant is signed, they're meeting Saturday, we're meeting Monday. No, they, I was curious, because I was told, reach out, you can change things. On, on the topic though, I was thinking, maybe, because we want town meeting to go well. And there's a lot to talk about, and it's starting at six P M. Do we try to hold a meeting ahead of time to flush out some of the issues or for questions? In the sense, in the way that the finance committee does a public hearing before the town meeting?
We could absolutely do it. The question is, like, realistically, how many of those questions are just gonna get filled in again?
I think the question, another part is, when we have questions about the school, I mean, I know a lot, and I, there's a lot that I don't know. I mean, I mean, how do we, they don't send anybody to help you?
Well, John, Don and Kim will be there.
Okay.
And as well as, John and Don have been on since the inception of the board.
But John Don said he wasn't gonna speak. Kim is not four.
Well, but the other thing is, Kim is the third school committee rep that we've had on that board, because Kim is relatively new to the school committee. So before that, we had Laura Rodriguez. And before that, we had Hannah Braden. Um, so hopefully some of those people will be there. We've been to the meetings, we've heard what's going on. I don't know how Lucy and Jake are gonna split up. I assume if I can be a great Barrington.
There's only two of them that can be in seven meetings.
But that's-
Jake had three or four guys over there.
So, I don't know, but at the end of the day, it's the warrant article and forty four pages, and we're voting on it.
Yeah.
And-
You can't wait to like pull out the warrant issue, that, that whole school board thing.
But also, in, in the end, it's not like we can do changes on the floor. It's voted up, voted down. So, it's not like you can change what's in there.
Maybe the issue is set upfront, like you can't make any edits to that.
Well, so, I said, how come there's no or take any other action relative there too? You can make changes, it just makes everything all void.
Right.
So, yeah.
Realistically, we can't make changes. It either stand, we either vote it up, as it is, or vote it down.
Yeah, so in some ways, it's really simple.
Well, it's-
Yeah, sure. Um, that being said, maybe what we'll do is we'll just say, six P M, that Tuesday before the town meeting. Because if you do it too far in advance, no one has, knows what's going on yet.
Wait, six P M, you mean, the Tuesday, so-
That was the day that you're meeting at nine?
The day that we meet at nine?
Yeah.
So, we'll think about that, but there's some value to it, because like you said, there's gonna be two hundred people there that haven't been to our little meeting where we answer questions.
Right.
But if we have five people here that figure out what, mostly I want this solar stuff to move right along.
Right.
To get to the school issue. If we have five more people who know what's going on with solar and have answered their questions about the wording, then they can help explain that. And also, some of the people who come and ask questions when we hold hearings like that are the same people who get up and question, ask questions at town meeting.
And it means we're prepared to answer them, yeah. It, it can be, the, and the most useful thing can be just making it clear what kind of questions are gonna get asked, so we have some cleave.
Well, I think there'll be questions about the financing, you know, I think.
I'd likely, the financing, I think, is the part I'm clearest on. It's the educational content that I am, it's just-
Well, then, well, if you go through that, that document, it says that that board's been decided for that. And if you talk, I talked to one person, said, a lot of times when they build these schools, they tell you what programs you will have when you get to the school. Here, they've left it totally, the way I wrote it, it's a pretty well left it up to this board. And it votes, they bring this board together and nail them in good position. Lucy sat down in that meeting on that Monday, oh, we'll take the best of the two school systems and make that. But that's a, that's a very general term.
Well, I also am concerned about where the administration will be drawn from. And Don, when I, I hope I'm not taking anything out of turn here, but we, he and I had a conversation about it. And I'm like, the, the administration's gonna be drawn from that Berkshire Hills school. And he's like, why do you say that? I'm like, because of shock, because we're talking about a district that's going to be centered in a building adjacent to the existing building.
Yeah.
And human beings being what they are, the likelihood is very high that the administration will therefore be primarily drawn from the existing administration in Berkshire Hills. It's just how things happen. Whether they have to happen that way or not, that's usually what does happen. And, you know.
There's a lot to think about between now and October twenty third.
You don't know the problem, you don't know what you don't know.
You don't? And, and it's not necessarily means that turning, like, with all the problems that may be incoming or following that, that doesn't necessarily mean that turning it down is the best choice. Like, I-
Well, if you go by with their numbers, say you turn it down, chances are your education costs are still going up because of what, twenty six thousand dollars, can you put a kick through there in votational?
I mean, we won't have a babe voice, we're going fast.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, vote on the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned, unanimous, yeah, eighty eight, yeah.